One moment, please. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 12th, 2021 Town of Iza Planning Board Meeting. Some housekeeping matters. If you're here for item number three on the agenda, which is Stephen Kubel's, that item will not be heard this evening. It has been adjourned. If you have item number five on the agenda, M. H. Brothers, Inc., Kara Shawn Caspian, that has been adjourned as well, will not be heard this evening. If you're here speaking as an applicant, we ask to remind you that to keep your presentation to 30 minutes or less, or less being the key part of that statement. And if you're a member of the community here to speak on an application, we also remind you to please keep your comments to three minutes. Looking at the attendees, I don't think everyone is here, so I'm going to right now skip item number one on the agenda, Mario Contavalli, because I don't see the applicant in the room. I'm going to go to item number two on the agenda, which is Planning Board Application Public Hearing, Don Taco Restaurant, P. B. Two zero two one dash zero one four, northwest corner of Jefferson Avenue and Suffolk Avenue, County Route 100, Brentwood, 739 Suffolk Avenue. Actor requests a modification of P. B. One nine nine seven dash zero zero four in order to remove a condition limiting the minor restaurant to a donut-type restaurant. Good evening to Mr. Heinz.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. I hope you can hear me. There's been a little bit of interference on the transmission and some rejoining signals, but if you can hear me, I'll proceed.
We can hear you. So a little low, but we can hear you. So go ahead.
We are requesting a modification of your 1994 approval at this location for a Dunkin' restaurant to be a proposed Don Taco Mexican eatery. I trust we are joined this evening by Julio Molina, who's the owner of the business. He operates similar eateries in two other locations in the town of Brookhaven, one for 10 years, one for three years, each with unblemished track records. And so we have an experienced operator for this location. Julio's company will be the sole occupant of this freestanding building, which will be upgraded, notably to include a new and improved ancil system in the cooking hood. The site itself is one of many such centers operated by the Abraham Daniel Stanley in Brentwood and Center Life Slip, well known to the board. It's well-maintained and well landscaped. The fence at the rear property line above a budding residential property was upgraded by the landlord at a considerable expense several years ago to provide a high-quality stockade fence on the residential side and a chain link fence on the commercial side. Landlord's about to receive an updated certificate of compliance for a number of changed uses and tendencies in this center, which entailed extensive electrical upgrades and other improvements. We've successfully passed all inspections by both the Building Department and the Fire Marshal. In association with this application, the planning department has requested upgrading screening for existing fence dumpster on the east side of the site, and we are agreeable to doing so as set forth in the proposed conditions, which we have executed and returned to Ms. Woznick's office as drafted. So we have a qualified applicant, a responsible landlord, a use consistent with the previously approved restaurant and with the commercial character of Suffolk Avenue in this vicinity, and we therefore respectfully request your favorable consideration.
Thank you. I do not see anyone who's here to speak on this application. Did anyone join who wishes to be heard? I hit the raise your hand button. If you are not seeing anyone who wishes to be heard, I'm going to turn to Ms. Woznick to give us a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property is located on the northwest corner of Jefferson Avenue and Suffolk Avenue in Brentwood. It's improved with the one-story multi-tenant shopping center with a mix of commercial uses. Tonight, the applicant is looking to convert the former Dunkin' Donuts restaurant located on the southeast portion of the site into a taco restaurant. Conditions of the previous special permit limited the use of the restaurant to a donut-type restaurant. However, there will be no increase in GFA or number of seats. There seems to be adequate parking to accommodate the use on site, and the applicant is only proposing eight seats, so most traffic should be for takeout orders only. The site itself is in pretty good condition. So based on this, planning recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions, which require the applicant to screen the dumpster located to the east of the proposed restaurant.
Thank you, Ms. Woznick. Any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would first of all just like to know of Mr. Heinz, if he reviewed the CNRs and agreed to them?
We have reviewed the conditions. We've executed them. We've provided a scanned copy to planning, and the originals are in the mix.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to grant the application based on the staff report, and the CNR is being executed.
Motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application subject to the CNRs. Is there a second? Second, my Mr. Matamore has his hand up before you, Mr. Moriarty. I know that was close there on the third, but second, my Mr. Matamore, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The application is approved. Thank you. I would just note for the record that we have 100% attendance of board members. Item three on the agenda I mentioned earlier has been adjourned for this evening. Item four on the agenda, Planning Board Application, Public Hearing, polished to perfection, P. B. Two zero two one dash zero one six, east side of Sycamore Avenue, 1,023.3 feet south of Veterans Memorial Highway, State Route 454, Bohemia, 1631 Sycamore Avenue. Actor requests a planning board special permit for a vehicle repair shop in the industrial one district pursuant to 68 dash 340.1B. Site plan modifications may be requested as part of this application. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening. How are you doing today?
Good, thank you. Go right ahead.
All right. So as I mentioned, my client, Chris, of post-perfection is looking to get a special permit application for his automobile body repair shop. He's been in business for several years, and he's looking to obviously legitimize his business and move it forward. In addition to that, as per with the tenant space, the other buildings, excuse me, the other tenant spaces in the building as well, James, who has been in discussions with the property manager to be contracted to, in addition to getting the special permit of this tenant space to also certify or, excuse me, get a certificate of occupancies for the other tenants within the building. The tenant and the, excuse me, the client and the property owner also, you know, agreed on the special permit conditions on the day of that they were issued. So that's pretty much what we have here to take any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the public hearing part, then we'll come back for reporting some questions. I have two people signed up. Is it Justine Drago? I'm not sure if Miss Drago wanted to speak or not. Can somebody bring Ms. Drago into the?
She just messaged us that she wishes not to speak.
Okay, that's great. Kate Morgan? Morgan, once you're ready, just unmute. You can go ahead and speak.
I'm here. I actually, I live right behind where this business is going to be, and I'm very happy to hear that it's going to be a good business, a family-run business, and I just wanted to say my part that I'm looking forward to having a good business as a neighbor.
Thank you. That's all I see who's here to speak. Is there anyone else who joined late that wished to be heard? Hit raise your hand. Not seeing anyone. I'm going to turn to Ms. Woznick for a report. Somebody move Ms. Morgan back or mute her. I'm not a, I don't have the rights to do it. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, so this property is located on the east side of Sycamore Avenue, approximately 1,000 feet south of Bets Highway in Bohemia. It's improved with a 28,000-square-foot multi-tenant industrial building that was CO'd in 1987. Tonight, the applicant is looking to convert one of the tenant spaces into a vehicle repair shop. The vehicle repair shop will be approximately 1,300 square feet and located in the very rear of the building. The site is in generally good condition. However, most of the tenants do not have COs for their uses, and there seems to be some unpermitted storage in the rear of the property. Based on this, planning would recommend the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions, which requires the owner to submit change-of-use tenant applications for the existing tenant spaces before this one can obtain a CO, and requires the rear portion of the property to be landscaped in order to discourage future unpermitted storage in that area.
Thank you. Ms. Woznick, I just need clarification on one thing. The businesses there that are currently in place are CO'd or they're not CO'd?
They do not have a CO.
Okay. Cordova, are you the landlord, or are you just representing the applicant for this individual business?
I am just representing the applicant for this individual business.
Okay. Is the landlord here this evening?
They are not. I spoke to them earlier today. There were any comments, obviously, I'd be happy to try and speak on their behalf. If not, I will say whether or not that's an issue.
Well, I mean, just from our perspective, it's not that we're opposed to putting a new business in there, but we tend to reserve decision on items where there are open issues, and if the landlord has multiple businesses in there that are not CO'd, I mean, I'd be hesitant to move forward on the approval, but I welcome to hear from the rest of the board members.
Okay.
Comments or questions from Mr. Frugari?
Isn't that one of the conditions that be before this use here gets permitted, the owner of the property has to submit applications for the change of use to get the use of CO'd?
That is one of the conditions, condition that Ms. Woznick mentioned. I would also note, though, that it's probably a town code that they actually have a CO for all of the current uses, and it doesn't stop them from violating the CNRs if we put them in place. I'm fine with whatever way you want to do it, conditioned or reserved until they're resolved. I defer to the rest of the board.
Conditions are great as long as they're enforceable. So we have to have a condition on there that's enforceable.
Right.
Otherwise, we wait till all the uses are CO'd.
Yep. So any further questions from the board? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like a motion, make a motion to grant the application based on the staff report.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application subject to the?
Subject to the CNRs.
Subject to the covenants and restrictions. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Cruz. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And there'll be one abstention myself. Thank you. The application is granted.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Item four on the agenda, polished to perfection. I'm sorry, that's item four is the same item four, but we skipped one. Item five on the agenda, Town Board Application is M. H. S. Brothers has been adjourned. Item six on the agenda, Planning Board Application Decision Item, Amal Pingling, P. B. Two zero one nine dash zero three four, southeast corner of Carlton Avenue, County Route 17, number 51, and Fisher Avenue, Islip Terrace. Actor requests a planning board special permit for a minor restaurant in the General Service T District pursuant to 68 dash 489.1A. A parking relaxation is also requested as part of this application in connection with a change-of-use application for a church and for the proposed minor restaurant. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Joseph F. Bezell, Bezell Blande Visconti, 535 Broad Hollow Road Suite B4 in Melville. The matter has been before the board before. At that time, the board did vote to approve the takeout restaurant. The board reserved the decision on the church for, to give the applicant and the planning department some opportunity to work out some conditions. Following up on the hearing, myself and my client, who's the property owner, worked with planning to draft a set of conditions. Those conditions my client took to the pastor of the church to validate that all of them were acceptable to him as well, and they are. So there's full consent to all the conditions from the property owner and from the church. And I would defer to staff report at this time unless the board has any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Woznick for a report, and then we'll come back if you have any questions.
Thank you. At the last hearing, like Joe said, the board granted the special permit for the minor restaurant, but reserved decision for the church parking relaxation. Since then, the staff and applicant have drafted site plan modification conditions to address the board's parking concerns as they relate specifically to the church. These conditions include limiting the number of seats within the church to 30 and requiring the basement to remain unfinished, unfinished storage space. The conditions also require any change of use for the church tenant space that requires a parking relaxation be brought back before the board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is there a motion? Mr. Matamore, unmute. You're good to go.
Yes, I was aware, having been briefed by Ms. Woznick, of the covenants that have been agreed to, and on the basis of her report, I would move to approve the hearing, approve the application subject to the covenants as worked out with the planning staff.
Motion by Mr. Matamore to grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions. Second by Mr. Bruno. Was that a question, Mr. Bruno? Was that in the?
That was a request to second.
Second by Mr. Bruno. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstention, the application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Item seven on the agenda, Town Board Application, Philip Camp, C. Z. Two zero two one dash zero zero eight, northeast corner of Sunrise Highway Service Road, State Route 27, and Washington Avenue, Islip Terrace, 2765 Sunrise Highway. Actor requests a modification of covenants and restrictions associated with T. C. Four five three six, in order to permit a church. Site plan modifications may be required as part of this application. Good evening to the applicant. Unmute when you're ready and you're good to go. Your presentation.
Sorry about that. Good evening. We were before you last week, and you had reserved decision based on some discussions with planning, and we, I met with planning this last week and submitted the revisions that they required to the site plan. They required two additional trees, conversion of some concrete area to landscaping, removal of a shed and putting a dumpster over there, and moving the handicap parking closer to the front entrance and then approaching Department of Transportation and asking them if we could provide some plantings in that area on Sunrise Highway. We've modified the plan and resubmitted it, which you're bringing up now, and we're coming, asking for permission. The only thing I want to clarify based on last week is I misspoke about their times of service. I said it was two days a week and on Sunday. It's actually four days during the week for two hours each day and then two hours on Sunday morning. And that's it.
What are the times under the four days? They all the same?
Four days during the week was five to nine. It was like five to eight, but they said that, you know, mostly everybody's gone by nine.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mr. Colgan for a report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As stated by the applicant, this application was previously heard on April 28 to review the parking and the traffic safety and explore the feasibility of adding landscaping within the New York State DOT right-of-way in the front yard along Sunrise Highway. With regards to the parking, the Division of Traffic Safety indicated that on-street parking restrictions are generally considered when a parking shortfall is observed. This avoids unnecessarily inconveniencing the neighbors who may need access to on-street parking from time to time. Again, the staff notes that the site does meet its minimum parking requirements, including parking spaces for uses on-site that generally aren't expected to be operational during the formal church events when parking is expected to be at its peak demand, so we don't foresee a parking shortfall at this time. The Engineering Division noted it has been its experience that New York State DOT prefers to limit landscaping in the right-of-way to grass in order to limit site obstructions and provide ample opportunity for snow storage. Alternatively, the board may want to consider adding a street tree on Washington Avenue as permits and replacing any aging landscaping with newer, more robust plantings or some low-line plants or trees. Additionally, a condition can be added to the site plan that the applicant be required to make a good-faith effort with DOT to add low-line plants that might be acceptable to the agency on property that it controls. So based on the foregoing, the staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached covenants and restrictions.
Thank you. I just want to confirm on the record the size of the congregation.
Ah, I forgot. I'm sorry. Hold on for one second.
Yeah, I know we discussed at the last meeting. I don't have the minutes in front of me. I just want to confirm that that's the numbers we're looking at.
I apologize. You caught me off guard, but it was, it was less than what we have. Bear with me. I have to find a quick email.
Yeah, the name is one concern was parking and the spillover parking. I just want to make sure again on the record that the size of the congregation is not one that, while the building might be small, that we're going to pack more people in and have cars spilling out into the street.
No, I don't. It was, it was around 80 people, including kids, but they're hoping, you know, they're always hoping, like most churches, to get, they, they're planning for the capacity that they have. So that's their goal is, I forget what we're planning for. Hold on. Total occupancy was going to be 147 seats. Currently, the congregation is approximately 80 people, and that's including children.
Okay. Mr. Colgan, for 147 seats, the 45 spots meets the requirement if it's all used at one time?
That's correct.
And Mr. Camp, are you okay with the additional conditions that Mr. Colgan just stated on the record regarding the?
Yes, and I also reviewed the covenants and restrictions, and I don't see anything out of line. I think it's fine.
Okay. Further questions from the board?
Yeah.
It's for Jerry.
Just a question regarding the landscaping along Sunrise Highway. You know, the landscaping along the Sunrise Highway itself might be more appropriate just to keep it nice grass, because during snowstorms and stuff, any vegetation is just going to get wiped out with the snow sitting there piled on it. But is there ability to have any type of landscaping up against the building itself? Are there landscape beds in front of the building? From passing by there, I think there is some area. Maybe if that landscaping was spruce, the view shed from Sunrise Highway would be greatly approved. Sean?
Yeah, so I guess the short answer is there doesn't appear to be much room for that just because of the aisles needed for the parking spots and where the sidewalk needs to be along the building. One suggestion I did have for Mr. Camp, and he noted on the site plan, and I can bring that up, hopefully it loads this time, is there's a concrete plaza kind of on just east of the church, and there could be an opportunity to, you know, sort that some of that out and, you know, provide some sort of decorative landscaping treatment. Won't be long sunrise, but it will be something, and it would increase the existing. Unfortunately, it's not loading.
Just maintaining what's there now and replacing anything that's died, you know, would be a great improvement.
Yeah, not sure why this isn't loading. One more time.
They definitely have plans to clean it all up, but they've been waiting until they have approval to move forward.
If you have the air on screen view, there is like what appears to be what was an outdoor seating area for the prior restaurant as proposed to become sidewalk area, and there could be, you know, there could be room to provide landscaping in that area.
Okay.
That was approximately 400 square feet.
Yeah, that's what I would suggest.
Further questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
No, I'm good.
Is there a motion? Mr. Moriarty?
I'd make a motion to grant the application subject to the additions and restrictions that we just discussed.
It's a motion by Mr. Moriarty to grant the application subject to the covenants and restrictions plus the additional ones we just discussed. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Frugari. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, the application is granted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Aye.
Item eight on the agenda, Site Plan Modification, E. Seventeen Holdings LLC, S. P. Two zero two zero dash zero three seven, south side of Montalk Highway, State Route 27A, 269 East Main Street, 100.9 feet west of Laurel Avenue, East Islip. Actor requests a buffer relaxation in connection with the conversion of part of an existing fitness center to medical office. Public hearing has been waived by the Commissioner of Planning pursuant to condition number eight of C. Z. Two zero two zero dash zero two four. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the applicant, Brian Kennedy from the law firm of Porcelli, Deegan, Toronto, with offices at 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite 1010, Uniondale, New York. The applicant is before this board seeking a buffer relaxation along northern boundary of the subject parcel. This relaxation is requested in order to construct 20 additional parking stalls to be added at the site pursuant to T. C. Five three five nine. Now, the applicant appeared before this board on December 8 of 2020 for a public hearing on an application to amend existing covenants and restrictions on the subject parcel and convert a Porsche, convert an existing fitness center into pediatric medical offices. Ultimately, this board recommended approval for this application on January 6 of 2021. Now, on January 28, the applicant appeared before the town board with this application. That application was ultimately granted on February 25 of this year. As part of that approval, planning staff and the town board require the applicant to provide 20 additional parking stalls on the property adjacent to my client's property, which is subject to a cross-access parking easement. The addition of these spaces require the relaxation of the 25-foot buffer requirement when the subject site is adjacent to a residential use. So unfortunately, in order to comply, to provide those 20 additional parking stalls and meet the dimension, the required dimensions for those stalls, the applicant must encroach on the required buffer. Granting this requested relaxation will allow the applicant to construct 20 additional stalls, all of which will be compliant with town regulations. Now further, the approved covenants and restrictions require the applicant to provide buffer plantings between these additional parking stalls and the property to the north. Granting this requested relaxation will not impact these plantings. With that, I would ask this board to look favorably on our request, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I believe this is Mr. Gonzalez, is correct?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This almost 1.2-acre site is zone business district. It's, as Mr. Kennedy stated, currently improved with the fitness center built around 1953. The front half of the building, which is about 5,600 square feet, is being converted into a medical office, leaving the remainder for the fitness center. As stated by Mr. Kennedy, this was through various boards, planning board, town board, through a change-of-zone application, which is approved by the town board in February. The restoration of the rear parking lot, as well as to provide additional 20 parking stalls beyond that between this property and the apartment complex to the north. As you can see on the plan before you, there is a 25-foot buffer that's required along that rear property line. The plan at the time of the change of zone was conceptual in nature, and no relaxations for that buffer was granted. That has brought the applicant before you tonight for a minor relief of that buffer requirement, as they worked through site plan review and the Engineering Division. As stated in the call to meeting, the Commissioner of Planning has waived the public component of this hearing per those conditions from the change of zone. The buffer itself, a standard buffer is 25 feet. On the east side, it is a little over 21 feet. On the west side, it is about 20 and a half feet. Staff feels the encroachment is minor. The amount of vegetation proposed is still the same as a standard buffer, and on the And on the north side of that property line, on the adjacent property is a parking lot. So the apartments themselves are set even further back from that parking lot. So there's quite a bit of distance between the property line and, and any residences for those apartments. It's not really feasible to rearrange the parking to provide a fully compliant 25-foot buffer as there is an existing access to the east, which I will highlight over here. So essentially, all the reworked parking and the additional stalls are, are being laid out to work with that existing access to the site to the east. So shifting the stalls closer to the back of the fitness center in order to provide more buffer would create some issues with site circulation and required aisle widths in terms of, you know, fire marshal access routes and things of that nature. So the applicant has worked with staff every step of the way, and we can, we feel the, the conditions are being improved substantially. So based on that, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. And also just to point out, on the other side of where the buffer relaxation is, it is a parking lot, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I think it's important to point out as well. Are there any questions from the board? Not seeing any. Is there a motion? Mr. Matamore? Oh, Mr. Moriarty, he unmuted before you, Tim. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move to grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
The motion by Mr. Moriarty to grant the application subject to the attached conditions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Matamore. I'm gonna give it to Mr. Matamore. Second by Mr. Matamore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, application is granted. Thank you. Going back to item one on the agenda, planning board application, public hearing, Mario Contavalli, PB 2020-2021, there's 011, west side of Lakeland Avenue, 711 feet north of Harding Street, Bohemia, 1360 Lakeland Avenue, app and request of planning board special permit for a restaurant in the general service T district pursuant to 68-489.1C, site plan modification. They also be requested as part of this application.
Good evening. How are you? I'm sorry, I was just notified I was on the Zoom two minutes ago. But this is an application for our restaurant to get expanded. It's there. It's a going concern. The building is doing wonderful. The bagel store operates in the morning and then closes, and the pizzeria opens in the evening. So the parking situation is no problem. And it's a great functioning building at this point. Hello?
Anything else you want to add or is that it?
No, no, that's it. It's just for the expansion of the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anyone here who wish to be heard on this application. Is there anyone who's come in who wishes to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna go to Ms. Woznick for a report.
Thank you. The subject property is located on the west side of Lakeland Avenue, approximately 140 feet north of Union Street in Bohemia. It's improved with a 13,000 square foot multi-tenant building, which was recently CO'd in 2017. Currently, the building has a bagel shop, Mexican restaurant, pizzeria, and two vacant office spaces. Tonight, the applicant is looking to expand the pizzeria, converting it from a minor restaurant to a 3,300-square-foot restaurant with 68 seats. In addition, the applicant is looking to build a building addition along the front elevation in order to create a vestibule entry area. The applicant has worked with planning to provide a more compatible design for the proposed building addition that blends in with the existing building architecture. Based on this, planning recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bruno?
Make a motion to grant the application subject to the conditions based on planning's report.
Thank you. It's a motion by Mr. Bruno to grant the application subject to the conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Frugari. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
That is the completion of our agenda. Is there a motion? Ms. Cruz?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
The motion by Ms. Cruz to close the meeting. Is there a second to that?
I was second to that.
By Mr. Moriarty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
All right, thanks, everyone.